That logistical issue, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, good afternoon.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we do have a forum of the board here, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started tonight. I got a few things to read and then we will turn it over to you for a few minutes of comments. So this special board meeting of the Board of Education for February 21, 2023 is called to order. And as I said, welcome, Mr. Cruz, thank you for being here. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider two formal complaints in which you are appealing the district's decision. Complaint number 2023-01 and 2023-03. In accordance with Board Policy 4.50.032P, the district follows certain procedures for resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, guardians, and people who reside in the district in order to resolve formal complaints in a fair and timely manner. If during this meeting, issues pertaining to confidential student records arise, we will need to move into executive session after first addressing in a public meeting the components of the complaint that do not pertain to confidential student records. If that happens, following the executive session, we'll return to a public meeting on the complaint. For each of the complaints, and there are two, we're considering tonight, you will have five minutes to provide your comments, and then following your comments, board members may follow up with questions for you or for staff. So we're gonna begin first with complaint number 2023-01, in which you raise a concern that PPS has not provided evidence of its comprehensive school counseling plan, nor evidence of education plan and profiles required by the Oregon Department of Education. Before we get started, Mr. Cruz, do you have any questions about the process?
Not at this time, no.
Then I think we will get going, and whenever you're ready, you can offer your five minutes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. So at this point, if you're ready, you can go ahead and start your five minutes on this first complaint.
All right, awesome. All right. So, Karonda Cruz, for the record, C-R-E-W-S. Greetings to the Board Chair, Co-Chair, and Directors. So regarding my complaint, last year, I spoke about a young man, pseudo-named Jamal, who have, basically, I've been tracking since elementary school and has not had the best reading instruction, math instruction, and things of that nature. So therefore, he's struggling in middle school and having some behavioral problems and things of that nature. So this has been the cycle, this has been the things I've been trying to raise for several years now. So going back to the pseudo-named Jamal, so he is now in middle school, and he is struggling now in reading, struggling in math. But imagine if Jamal actually had an educational plan that we were able to catch these particular skills that he's lacking in seventh grade, which is, according to our Division 22, which governs our education, our education system, an educational plan is a formalized plan and a process that involves students planning, monitoring, and managing their learning and career development during the grades 7th through 12th. So going back to how we can save those Jamals, not only do we need to save them in terms of helping develop their reading skills, but if we had a solid educational plan, maybe we can build a trajectory for them that can give them some better success. So I'm just here representing the Jamals, I'm representing those single parents that really don't understand and don't really know the system. They're just working every day, they come home, they're trying to do the best for their child, but they don't really understand how the system's operating and how the system is not really for their best interest. So I'm here to show you that we have something that we can actually establish, and we can help a lot of Jamals in our system if we can have a solid educational plan. Now, the district is going to provide some evidence to show that they're compliant. So instead of just checking the box in terms of being compliant, if we can actually look and see at what they're providing, they're actually just providing PowerPoints, which are lessons, which is only part of the educational plan. So I believe I provided to you guys an educational plan profile that the Oregon Education Department provides for districts, and basically, it's a roadmap to guide students' learning throughout their schooling. And I'm looking for that as a parent for my seventh grader and my eighth grader, and I haven't been able to see that profile. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. So now we'll open it up to board questions, and actually, maybe first I'll ask the superintendent if staff would like to respond, or you wanna go straight into board questions?
I think directors have had a chance to review the documents. We have our Chief of Student Services, Jay Boon, here. You've probably read the documents provided by Mr. Loveland as well, so we'll go ahead and proceed with any questions as they come up from the directors.
Great. So now, at this point, we'll open it up to board members for questions, either of Mr. Cruz or of staff around this first complaint issue, sorry, this first complaint, which again, has the two issues subsumed in.
I do have a question, and, Mr. Cruz, I just wanna thank you for advocating for those students that are falling behind and don't have a safety net, and for, you know, keeping on us to hold us accountable. I just now opened the documents that were shared earlier today. I work full-time during the day and literally don't have time for any kind of a break, and so I haven't looked at this, but I'm curious if, you know, the staff response was that there were, in the works, there was, you know, in the works, by the end of this year, there would be a plan, and I'm curious if we can compare what you've presented with what staff has presented. I'm just curious where, at which points they diverge and, you know, does that make sense? We were told by staff that this is in the works for seventh graders, and so I'm wondering where, I wanted to compare, and again, I haven't had time to read what you've sent over today, compare what staff says is in the works and what you're actually advocating for. Where are they different?
Are you asking Mr. Cruz or are you asking staff?
I'm asking staff where they differ.
Sure. Jane, you wrote a response to the first complaint. Could you come up and provide clarification as to whether comprehensive counseling plan impacted this or not?
I'd like to invite colleague Marquita Disman as well.
Thank you.
Program Administrator who supervises our counseling program here at PPS. Good evening, Directors. Yeah, so I can speak to, so I believe, as I detail in my response, I believe we have the components and content that meet the requirements of ODE with regard to educational plan and profile. As part of school counseling in general, that's a key component of school counseling, that we start planting those seeds around college and career readiness, starting in elementary school. When we get to middle school, as Mr. Cruz referenced, we need to have specific content that starts asking questions around what are personal interests for a career? What are their career interests, and how can we build on those interests to establish a pathway to successful realization? Our team has worked very hard to develop specific content for our school counselors to deliver, starting in seventh grade, as Mr. Cruz mentioned. And in that response is our examples of the lessons that we have developed in order to stimulate those conversations among students, and then, you know, capture in a formal way in a program we call CIS Junior, which details a reflection from each student, and serves as the starting place for students to build on that interest.
I think you encapsulated it well. I mean, starting in seventh grade, students actually get to do assessments, they get to think about their interests and their strengths, and CIS is a pretty robust tool, and then it kind of funnels in information from the Department of Labor and Statistics, and they get to really kind of start looking at potential career pathways, and they capture that information both in seventh grade and in eighth grade, so they really start kind of honing your skills. And, you know, I'm in conversation with the particular school, but it is on track to be delivering those lessons in April, so we kind of circled back with our school folks to ensure that if I'm comfortable with the lessons, we actually contained all of our school counselors on delivering all of these middle school lessons, and have set the expectation that this happens in seventh and eighth grade for all of our middle schools across the district. So now everyone has lessons, they've had time to kind of digest what the materials are, and have the skills to teach these lessons in seventh and eighth grade.
And is this Oregon educational plan and profile a new requirement for ODE? Is this the first year?
No, this is not a new requirement, it's actually been around quite a while, but kind of our, the district level work around aligning K-12 school counseling programming is really in its first few years, myself and our district team kind of of leads have really been helping establish a complete scope and sequence. Before, you know, each school was kind of charged with having to deliver and develop those materials themselves. We're now really focusing on alignment across our district, so we can say, at every middle school, this is what students should be receiving from their comprehensive school counseling program. And the career and college readiness lessons are just one of several that we've already developed that are a part of kind of the middle school scope and sequence.
So it seems to me like there's some gray area here between what is written as a mandate by ODE and the way that Mr. Cruz is looking at this, which is entirely reasonable. So ODE is telling us that they don't consider us out of compliance because we have certain pieces in place and because we are making good progress, and in fact, are exemplary in many respects. But is it clear, like, what their actual expectation is? You know, what full compliance looks like? Because it seems a little squishy there.
Well, I would say that I think our, kind of, the Oregon educational plan and profile is pretty minimal. You know, it is, you know, an exploration, kind of, career development activities at the middle school level, and then actual, kind of, you know, individual planning for students on their coursework every year, which, you know, in the high school level, that's done on a regular basis through individual student planning and forecasting activities and things like that. So we actually met with ODE a few months ago and kind of shared with them what our current progress is, because we're kind of looking to build that 7th through 12th template for all school counselors to be, including high school counselors, beyond kind of their current systems that they use, and they had mentioned looking to build a more robust program. So that's, so I think there's some forthcoming changes with ODE, that we don't know what those are necessarily quite yet, but in terms of what ODE requires for 7th through 12th, we have that.
So can I just?
Yeah.
If I could just add a comment, I agree, it does feel a little squishy if you read through this document, and that's why we were really proactive and intentional about reaching out to ODE with the content we've created to make sure we are satisfying, you know, their expectations, requirements.
And so I think, I think you're helping me, because the staff response, there were a couple of things I was a little confused about, but I wanted a little clarification, I think you provided it. You know, there's a section in here that says very clearly, "PPS is in compliance with current ODE guidelines." You further go on to say that ODE has cited us as an exemplar district, which is great. There's some other language, though, a little bit earlier, I think a little later, that talks about, you know, ensuring an implementation plan that will eventually satisfy requirements, which then left that space for me, I was like, wait, are we meeting requirements or are we not? Am I hearing you right, that there are some new things that may be coming down? So when we say eventually, it's to meet the new guidance, or?
So, so it's a cumulative process also, so there are components, and so this is great, this has started no later than seventh grade, and continues to be developed all the way through the 12th grade. And so there are pieces of it that we do each year, and that builds into and adds to the plan. It is not something that is just done in seventh grade and then that's mapped out further. So the whole focus around this plan is for post-high school, and so students start, and so consequently, throughout the year, we have different core counseling lessons that we address with the focus of doing this component in the seventh grade.
Who's talking right now?
Jay, you know, I'm the Chief of Student Support Services.
I feel like this is more of a statement than a question, but I feel like at the heart, this complaint is about Mr. Cruz saying he sees demonstrated failures of PPS, especially around some of our Black students, and that's something we know from our data. And I hear us saying, like, procedurally and systemically, we're doing all those things that we need to do, and I think we've also talked as a board and as a district of, and yet, we know we're not, so we're investing. So I think, for me, this is a little bit of, at the heart, Mr. Cruz was right, like, we would love to have the system in place that he's talking about, and we are trying to improve for our students, and I think that's the tension for me, is we've got the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and yet, there's still the sense of, we want to do more for our students. So where does that lie? And I don't know that this formal complaint process really resolves that for any of us, but I think that's part of the power of people like Mr. Cruz as advocates, to continually force the system to say, we may meet the standards, and yet, we all know the truth is, there are students like Jamal who are not getting what they need. How do we help support parents and students to get that, even when technically, we have everything correct that we can answer for a formal complaint process?
And I can just really quickly?
And I wanna provide some clarification on that, so thank you for that, and I wanna build on what you just said, but I wanna provide some clarification. Thank you again for PPS providing the evidence in terms of the lessons, but I'm actually, if you look at the law, it says "plan" and "profile." So I'm actually looking for a profile. So if you look at the template that I provided for you, that is a template of a profile. So if you look at the complaint, I've been asking for a profile for my children. So imagine if we had a profile for children and students like Jamal. So then, student programs, programs that we are contracting out of, which is another complaint that I have pending, that we don't have outcomes for, they can look at these profiles, and they can help those Jamals build those trajectories for success. So just wanna provide the clarity, is that the complaint is that PPS is not providing the evidence for the profile.
Yeah. So, Mr. Cruz, let me, and I wanna thank you for that, and I wanna pick up on Ailey's point. I think one of the challenges, I'll just say for me, in reading through this, was actually the question of whether this is the right forum to be having the conversation that I think you wanna have, and that I think is a really important one. The complaint is whether PPS meets the requirements. As a board, that's the decision we have to make today, whether we uphold the superintendent's findings that these complaints are unsubstantiated or not. It's not the forum to have a conversation about whether we should go beyond that, right? And what I think, and I wanna make sure I get clarification from staff, you're saying that you think this profile would be really helpful to your kids, to Jamal, you know, to other kids in the district. I agree with that. I hear staff saying, that's not required as part of ODE guidelines, which means we are in compliance, which is the decision we're gonna make in this very formal, somewhat strict, you know, process. There's another conversation we can be having outside of tonight, I don't know whether there's more that we should be doing. One, it's, the district is doing a lot in this area, but also in these particular areas, whether this is something that we wanted to put time and resources into.
The thing that's most interesting to me, Mr. Cruz, about what you just brought up and that stuck out to me in this complaint, is the space between maybe an expectation of an individual profile for each student and programmatic offerings that the district might have. And one thing that we are doing in just a couple weeks is we're having a work session on our middle school redesign, and the connection to our board goals around high school readiness for middle schoolers, which I think is a perfect opportunity to have this conversation. And while it seems pretty clear that ODE is not requiring an individual profile or plan for each student that really specifically maps their individual career goals and aspirations, you know, that's something that we can talk about.
I just wanna correct it. So they do require a profile.
Individual?
Built in throughout their high school career, so starts in middle school, and the students enter information into the CIS Junior, or?
Yes, CIS Junior.
A program. And then they move into ninth grade, and then it's a different program, but basically, through that whole process, it creates a profile that the student leaves with when they culminate in the 12th grade.
Question about that. Because, I'm just looking at the OAR right here, it says, "Each student shall develop an education plan and build an education profile." And I look at this, and just like the sample one, and it does seem very, a lot more specific versus like a series of activities or delivering lessons. Just as a layperson, as a regular parent, I would read this, what it says, and kind of the requirements from ODE is, like, there's actually a thing. Oh, there is.
And there is?
There is. I think, I think, just so that, like, I guess, just looking at the academics is like, I'm struggling to find what the thing, what we're describing, this seems like more of a process, and something that's layering on versus like a thing. So, having had a student who really struggled, like, I would see this thing, a plan and a profile would be really helpful, not like at the junior year, but, you know, especially starting in middle school, because that's usually when kids get, like, off track, and then they have a hard time getting back on. So are we working towards a specific plan and profile for every individual student, or is that what we're aiming for?
Yeah. It feels like we're timing on two different things.
Well, can I just have them?
Yeah. I just wanna say, because I hear what you're asking for, and what Mr. Cruz is asking for, as a profile that parents can use to help support struggling readers, what I heard you say is, the profile is something that they get at the end after working through all this process. So it sounds like you've got a profile that you want early in the process, you're talking about a profile that's at the end of the process, that's just my clarifying question.
One second, Art of that.
So let's have staff.
Yeah, let's have staff answer that.
Can I get a response to?
Yeah, so the way we have really interpreted, interpreted the education plan and profile, the profile is exactly that, it's something that's built over time, and when we think about students and what their post-secondary plans are, a lot of the activities that they do for their profile are like logging, logging, you know, their awards, experiences, things they experience through high school, and that is the most relevant when students are thinking about applying to college, or whatever their post-secondary plans are, which is why they start recording all those things when they get to high school. So there are specific lessons and activities that they do during their high school experience that they are building that educational profile, and those are built through kind of lessons and work with school counselors.
So this piece here, it says, "The education profile serves as a compass that documents students' progress and achievement toward their goals." So is that, like, here's, if you're getting Ds, like, you're not on track to meet that, or your grades are at this level, or your proficiencies, or you're, you know, taking AP classes, or you're?
So in this, for this, you weren't done asking a question?
Well, I'm just curious what, like, we view the profile is, of like, how that would, that would help, you know, document student progress and achievement if we're not actually?
So on this particular, this particular OAR, I mean, these occur in both, across states, sometimes they're called high school plans, post-secondary plans. When they're, when they're talking about academic profiles, they're talking about, "I would like to be a blah," and what are the academic-oriented classes I need to take throughout high school, and then on, beyond high school to prepare for that? And how do I maintain track and/or adjust based upon what my goals are? So when it, when it talks about that profile, it's like, what's my pathway? What classes am I taking? Four years of mathematics because I'm going into a pathway or a post-secondary goal that requires that sort of study? Or am I, whatever those pathways are, that is the type of profile, the type of plan, the type of activity this particular requirement is addressing, which is why it's built throughout the educational.
So if you said, like, I'm interested in, pick a CTE area, that's like a more of a technical field, like, here are the CTE courses you would be taking and documenting, and you're passing them. So if a student said, "I wanna go to college, I'm not quite sure in what," would there be, like, a documented, like, hey, if you're, if you're getting, you know, Cs or lower, like, you may not be on track to that? Is that what happens, or?
It serves as a compass, as it says. So I think, I think in middle school, you know, if you look at the components here, the idea is to establish that foundation, so we wanna describe your academic and career interests, then your personal educational career goals. And so that's, that's the start of that compass point. And so, yes, I think to your question, as a student is progressing through school, that serves as a place where we can come back to periodically, and with counseling support, and say, how are we progressing towards it? This is what you stated at this age, is that still your wish? Has this changed? If we are, are we on track with that? So I think we are looking at a combination of great performance, of course, scope and sequence, making sure that they have access to, you know, secondary education options or employment options. So I think, I think that's exactly what that profile does, is it serves as a compass for both students and for staff to support the realization of what was established early on in school careers.
So just to be clear, every student in PPS does have a profile? So my freshman and senior, if I walk in tomorrow and ask the counselor, can I see the education profile?
Part of that is their, is their transcript, so, right, that's their current academic progress every semester, and then part of that work they're doing inside of My Learning, which is kind of the career and college readiness tool for high schools.
Is it in ParentView?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we see part of it in ParentView?
My Learning?
I think some of their transcript stuff might be in ParentView.
Oh, sure, definitely, the transcript is available.
I'm just curious about My Learning, right?
Our high school parents here. Parents have access to My Learning, yeah.
So I'm a little confused on the evidence that was provided for me that was supposed to be a profile. So, and to Scott's point, when you're, when you're, you basically stated, you don't think this is the right platform, where I'm kinda confused, if I'm, if I see something in Division 22, that's, that is a hole, and I'm not providing any evidence for a profile for my children, but I don't, you're saying that this is not the right platform? So I'm a little confused, because I think this is all based off of interpretation. So do we have profiles, or do we don't have profiles? Because that's what I'm asking for, I'm asking for a profile for seventh grade.
And just to clarify, Mr. Cruz, this is the right format if you think that PPS is falling short of Division 22 guidance or guidelines or laws? My, my, my point was that, and I'm more referring to your email earlier today, where you wanted the board to direct the, you know, the district to do more. Our decision today, if we find that the district is in compliance, that's it, right? We substantiate and we move on. If we find the district is not in compliance, then we can, we can go back and say, you know, we want some corrective action plans and other things. To the extent we do find, and I don't know how the board's gonna vote tonight, but to the extent we find that we are in compliance, the conversations about anything we need to do above and beyond that just don't take place here. That was, that was really what I was intending to say. And they can take place in a lot of other places, right? I mean, you can bring forward those ideas, the board can bring resolutions, we can make policy changes, there's lots of other ways we can do that, which is not as part of the complaint process.
So I guess it's an interpretation on what is compliant then?
That's exactly what it is, that's right.
By saying something is not compliant, but the district is saying they are in compliance, so you're, you're basically taking a stance as the public figure that we voted for, that PPS is, is, yeah, they are basically checking the box, and they're compliant, therefore, your interpretation is not correct.
Yeah, that's, that is the decision we have to make tonight, is whether the district is in compliance or not. I think one quick question for you, I mean, having heard staff talk about what we do for our students, where do you believe the district is falling short in terms of providing the profile?
The template that I provided for you is what I don't have.
And I think, what I think I just heard from staff, but correct me if I'm wrong, is this information, it may not be in this template form, but it is available for every PPS student, right? If you piece together transcripts, and piece together the My Learning, the other things, and it starts in seventh grade and builds through senior year.
And how we've really interpreted the ed plan and profile is the profile work really starts in high school, right? The planning part, the exploring, those really larger questions around assessment and kind of thinking about your pathways start in middle school, and that's what we've crafted kind of our scope and sequence for counseling to be focused on. And then when students get to high school, that's when they really start building that profile, as we mentioned, because you really start having very concrete outcomes, right? Whether it's your grades, whether it's your extracurricular activities, all those pieces.
And can I just?
So there it is, Board Chair, we don't have profiles in seventh grade, they have profiles for, so there's, there's your evidence.
Well, I think, I think we heard it starting, but I just, one more quick question, I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to you, Michelle, but, I mean, Mr. Cruz, you say in your email, "Imagine if we had a robust program that created a profile for students starting in the seventh grade that can help build trajectory for students like Jamal." I feel like I've heard from staff that that's exactly what we do. So I'm actually trying to figure out where the distinction is, but I'll leave that as a hypothetical.
Well, and that was my question when I first started, was what is it that is not being provided, you know? So we have the district saying, "We're in compliance," and then we have Mr. Cruz saying, you know, "Wouldn't this be nice?" And also, this, this is ninth through 12th, so is there another whole other profile?
That's the guy?
So this is what comes from ODE?
Yep. Okay.
This is what they've said would meet, would comply.
Okay, but is there a version of this for middle school? Because this is for high school.
No, so through our lessons, and then the subsequent activities, where we have students reflect and identify, you know, what their hopes and dreams are with regard to career and college, that is, that is then captured in our, the CIS Junior program. So that's, that's that foundation.
And that follows the student?
That follows the student to high school, and then we build on it through our?
Whatever.
Yes, through our. Yes, through our My Learning program, yes.
So my 5'5" son who wanted to be in the MBA in sixth grade.
See, that would have been a good time for our counselors to sit down and have a conversation about, yeah.
So are all students still required to take that ninth grade career class?
CCE, Career Policy and Strategy. It's kind of morphed and it's different at high school. Some, some schools have kind of a freshman inquiry class or depends on the high school.
But the components are embedded somewhere.
That's true. Yes.
Any additional questions for Mr. Cruz or for staff?
So there seems, there is a little bit of a disconnect between what ODE describes and what in other places they actually require. So they've got a template that begins in 12th grade, but they've got an expectation that they state that begins in seventh grade. So is there? But we're implementing it.
I think the examples ODE provides identifies that there are things like outlined that start in the seventh grade with gathering interest, setting goals, understanding strengths and aptitudes. And moving into the ninth grade, there are more specific elements related to what your, your credits, credit achievement, grades, what your OSAT scores are, you know, some more academic right to goals, I think. So their guide provides flexibility in a sense, or kind of, I guess, honoring of the different types of activities that happen at different developmental ages for putting together of the plan for post-high school.
Maybe, maybe one more follow up. I, I, and I want to be careful not to get into student confidentiality issues with Mr. Cruz's children, but did we, I mean, as part of our evidence, we, we, we provided, right? The components of this educational profile for his students.
The, the lesson will be delivered this spring. I think we have the, the specific dates that April 17th.
I think it said April.
Yep.
Okay.
April 23rd. Is that like the academic progress? Cause what I thought I heard is at the high school level, file is the, is the transcript and this My Learning piece? So is, is, is the disconnect that that's, we look at it, it's like, hey, there are these things, these pieces that are out there that are available to parents, but maybe parents are like, well, I'm looking for the, the one place where it is. And like at middle school, there's not one place where that is. It's like you've got your report cards, you've got your OCS scores. Is, is that where the, the disconnect is happening? It doesn't seem like.
And also too, I just want to say, you know, on the record, you know, Board Chair, you know, you just, you just operated in a form of racism because I'm sitting here telling you that the educational profile was not provided for me. And then you, I guess you didn't believe me and then you just asked PP, the staff if it was provided. So I'm confused on that. So, but carry on.
Are there any other questions? I'll just, I, I, so I will just say, for the record, so I'm, I'm going to vote to, you know, uphold superintendent's findings in this matter. That doesn't necessarily mean I don't think there are ways to improve. And, and I guess, Mr. Cruz, to your, to your point, you know, when I read through, you know, this, this complaint, it, again, it seemed like there's an issue of compliance and then there's an issue of whether there's more we can do. I know this district is doing a lot, you know, to, to, to benefit all of its students and particularly focusing on underserved students. I think if you have specific ideas that, that you think we should be doing more of, I would love to hear that. I would love to sit down and talk to you. I know other board members would love to hear those ideas as well. And to the extent that four of us on this board think an idea is worth moving forward with, then it will move forward, bring that forward through resolution, through policy change, through other things. So there are lots of ways to make those types of changes that are sort of outside of this process. Again, this process is, is, is intentionally, you know, we have to take one side or the other, which is, which is the, the purpose of my questions, but I just want to let you know that's how I'll be voting. Any other board members?
Director Hollins has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Director Hollins.
Yeah, I just had a few clarifying questions that I, I've heard so many things and I apologize that I don't have the information in front of me. I'm, I'm in my car in Texas right now. So I heard, well, I guess one question is, have we always been in compliance or have we just got into compliance?
We have, we have not been in compliance in a comprehensive across the district way. And that's, that's, that's something that we have prioritized in, in our department in the last, in the last several years, is making sure that we as a district are, are approaching this from a comprehensive way and providing the scaffolding to ensure that we are in compliance. As, as, as Ms. Guzman said previously, it was left to school counselors and individual programs, schools to develop it before. And we are now more mindful about providing that scaffolding.
No, I, I get the correction, I get the correction action you're taking now. I, I understand that. Well, just one, again, I was just asking, have we always been compliant or we, have we just got into compliance? Cause I know I've seen some stuff about this, oh, 2022 stuff. So have we always been in compliance or are we just getting in compliance? And I just heard you say we have not always been in compliance, but we're putting things in place and now we, we, with the stuff that we showed ODE, we are now compliant. When did, when did that go from the time that we was not compliant to the time we was compliant?
I don't have evidence from past years to, to say whether or not we were in compliance. I, I will say this year, like I said, we, we have worked with ODE to share our materials. We reached out to them to ensure that we are, are meeting the, the requirement and expectation. ODE will also be releasing a, a more concrete and extensive technical assistance guide around this very issue this year. We will continue to, to embrace that guidance and, and ensure we are meeting the expectations of ODE. I, I can tell you as of this year, based on, on ODE's requirements.
Did those conversations after the complaint go? Cause you, the complaint originally in September. So you were in contract, contact ODE before the complaint. So it was filed originally in September 6th.
Yeah. Complaint came to us later in the fall. And so our conversations with ODE happened before that.
Gary, did you have another question?
Sure.
Yeah, and I guess I'm looking at too, and this is actually, something actually came up from Senator Lou Fredrick yesterday during our legislative session when we're going to advocate at the state level. And one of the things that he said is, and which would kind of hit hard and stuff that he's talking about bringing to the state legislators coming up in the session is that, you know, we have all these things in place. We have all these, and his word, we have all these scientific models that we've been having for years. We have all these different things that we're going to do, but yet we have not done it. And so for him, it was actually hard for us to advocate because the plans are great, implementation has not been. And just from what I'm hearing, when we're talking about, you know, being in compliance, it seemed like we were, we wasn't, now we're getting there. And I just wonder how many kids have, we have fell through the cracks while we're trying to get there and to the point to we're getting there.
And I think that's the thing we continue to wrestle with as a district and that keeps all of us up at night.
Well, I, I get that our kids are the only ones that's losing to get this. And that's what, that's, when he brought that up, when we were talking about trying to advocate for the school district, that's the main thing that was on his mind was that how the hell you, this is my paraphrasing, how the hell you guys going to ask for more when we're not doing anything yet? Or we're not seeing outcomes yet? That's, that's it.
I think there's a, there's a lot of big statements being made. I thought we were, is there a plan in place and a profile that emerges over time? Yes, there is. You know, does having a profile for every student guarantee that, you know, everybody's at grade level and meeting expectations? I would argue probably not. I think it's doing the work that needs to happen that's personalized for every student in the classroom in every school. And that's, I think, the work that we're building capacity at doing. I don't think there's any shortcuts. I don't think it's a compliance form, but we haven't, we haven't been out of compliance in Division 22 in this area recently. So, you know, as far as the complaint goes, you, you have sort of the staff's sort of, you know, verdict on that. So I want to move on to the vote on this so we can get to the second complaint.
I just want to, I want to ask the question, you said, well, superintendent said recently. What is, what is the definition of recently?
I don't know if student services off the top of their head can say, when was the last year that we didn't meet this Division 22 requirement? During my time here, I can't recall.
I can't say that either. I can say we, we've met the requirement in the last two years.
Yeah. So for at least two years, this has not been an area we've been out of compliance on. And even as ODE builds up technical assistance and a toolkit, they've been looking at our work to design that for some statewide guidance.
May I ask if that's complaint based, if we're out of compliance or not? Or is it, you know, in other words, does, is it on the parents or the community to bring forward?
No, we would have to self-report if we're out of compliance.
The board reviews those.
At the part of the Division 22 report.
I think this is a good example of when that process actually works well, because you were saying that before, when the responsibility was diffuse and at the school level, it became apparent to you and your team that there were kids falling through the cracks and that everyone wasn't implementing to the plan and to the ODE expectation the same. And so you took it back. And this is, this is a microcosm of all kinds of work all over the district that is being, you know, overseen on a more systemic level.
I just want to say one more thing before you guys vote too. And just to respond to the Board Chair, you had, thank you for reading my email when I, when I tried to give you the imagination in terms of a robust program to help save Jamal throughout the district. But I just want to, I, I want to push back a little bit because, you know, as, as we vote you guys in, there's the power of four, and the board has the power of four, four votes to be able to direct the superintendent to do, create a program, create a more robust, robust program. So if I'm asking in particular that I don't have a profile for my, for my particular children and you're stating that there is a profile that is provided, but I don't have one, like, you know, so this is all based off interpretation. So you want to continue to just check the box. And we're complying base where, you know, you know, we continue to, to fill the Jamals. But, but, but carry on, just do what you have to do. And, but, you know, I don't think this complaint process really works. And yeah, we'll see what happens from there.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll, I'll say again, because I think it's worth reiterating, that the evidence you've presented does not convince me that we are out of compliance. The evidence you've presented does convince me there may be additional things we can do. And I'm going to stress it again, this complaint process is not intended to make policy changes for the district. It is intended to determine whether we're compliant. That's what we get to decide tonight. These other questions that you're raising can be, can be, and should be, I hope they are raised. I'm, again, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with you at any time to talk about, about those things to move forward. So, and, and I'm also happy to talk to you about this complaint process moving forward and whether this is the right place to be bringing some, forward some of those things. Last thing I need to say, just because it was on the record, what Director Hollins said about some conversations, I, I just, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there is, there is a political incentive by people in Salem to say that districts are not doing anything for kids because they've also failed to fund us at an adequate level. And I just, you know, I, I want to make sure we're not falling into that trap. Are there things that districts in the state can do better? A hundred percent there are, but I think it's really unfair to say this district hasn't done anything or hasn't implemented plans or hasn't moved in down that direction. And particularly when the political incentive is aligned, because they don't want to provide us more funding. So I want to be really clear. You asked how many kids have fallen through the cracks? Gary, can I finish real quick? Oh, I'm sorry, it's an echo. Sorry, I thought I heard you trying to talk. I'm sorry. You asked the question about how many kids have fallen through the cracks. I have to say, how many kids have fallen through the cracks? Cause we haven't funded the QEM for the last decade, right? And there would be a lot fewer kids who would fall through. So just because you said it on the record in this hearing, I wanted to also say that on the record. And it really has nothing to do with this complaint, but it's a conversation we should continue having.
Let me respond to that real quick. When we're talking about whether the OEM is, is funded at the, the level it should be, only kids who's not getting those levels is our black and brown kids. So we, I, 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 I understand, believe me, I understand. I think we should, the state should be funded. I made that perfectly clear to him as well. We should be funded to the, the maximum we need to for our kids. But when we look at it, it's only certain kids that even with the funding we have is not doing well. So it's, 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 it's interesting to me to figure out how to, some kids are doing well, some kids ain't with the same funding that they are.
I want to pause us. I like to pause us because we're really moving far away from, from where we're supposed to be tonight. And as much as I have a contention with, with everything that we're talking about tonight, I have to look at why we're here and what it is that we're actually supposed to be, supposed to be voting on. And as much as it, it, it actually irritates me that the bar is so low. It's, for me, it's, we're saying that are we in compliance to give, give kids a bare minimum? And I feel like the bar's just been set low. And we're, again, with everything else that we're talking about, it's good that we have these conversations. I think that we should be having them. I don't feel that this is the space for any, for those conversations. And I know that we're, we're being responsive to what was put on record and what was said on record, but at the end of the day, that's not what we're supposed to be talking about right now. And I don't want us to get distracted right now. Again, I don't like the position that I'm in as far as like what I have to vote on tonight, but I do want to stay focused on what it, what we're actually supposed to be doing while we're here tonight. And then from that, I believe that there's another conversation that we need to have, whether, whether a complaint is raised or someone else says something or not, I believe the onus is on us as the, the leaders to say, we've heard this. Now how do we respond to what was really said, regardless of what we've, we've done? How do we respond to what was really said and what was really meant, the intention of bringing this, this forward and then go from there? So I just want to pause this all for just a moment to say, these are good conversations. But even, you know what I'm saying, the book says, all things are lawful but not expedient. It may be the right thing to say, but is it the right time? And so I want us to be looking at that and just, is it the right time to have the conversation that we have? And can we get back to where we're supposed to, where we're supposed to be?
Something I want to just comment on before we have our, have our votes. I want to acknowledge that our response was very late outside the, the time periods that we need, that are set by law and our policies. And so like my, my question is like, we're, that in, in my mind is if we're in compliance now, which I assume since we, ODE has said we have, but like, were we in compliance in September? So if this, this was, you know, a catalyst to, to move the conversations along, I think that's great. I will appreciate the, the offer that's been extended that we can have a conversation about maybe a plan and a, and a profile that is something that parents would view as like a useful tool when we have our conversation about the middle school and design as, as a, as a place to have that conversation. And we, you know, I think it'd be great to focus group with parents. Is this actually useful? Because if it's not useful to parents as the sort of guide also to their students along the way, compliance, compliance, that's more of a compliance mechanism versus something that's useful. And I, so I'm going to take Director Scott up on that. Offered that, to have that conversation at different times. I think, I think it's a great conversation and I appreciate that Mr. Cruz has raised it.
Okay. Moving us on to the vote on the first issue. Sorry, I want to, again, we're going to move on to the second complaint. So again, this is framed in the, in the, in the, in the way of all in favor of affirming. So just to be really clear with the board, so the question is, all in favor of affirming the superintendent's step one decision around this, this, this first complaint? Please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Yes, with a caveat that we have those conversations.
Gary, I didn't hear a vote from you.
I'm gonna vote no, just on principle.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I should have asked then, all those in favor, all those, please oppose, please. please indicate by saying no.
No.
Okay, and then any abstentions? There are seven of us. So, okay, so issue number one is affirmed by a vote of six to one.
Mr. Cruz, from a compliance perspective, your student's profile is to be delivered by the end of the year. So if you don't get that, or if you're not satisfied with that, will you let us know?
It's the beginning of the profile, right?
The beginning, right. But the template and the, will you keep us posted? And then also I would encourage-
The quality, the quality question.
So we have a second complaint to move on to here. But I'm actually realizing, and I'm sorry administratively, I didn't pick this up. Do we need to vote on each of the issues within the complaint?
Two issues in the complaint, yes.
And why do we need to vote separately on those?
There could be different answers. I mean, if the board is six to one on both, then it doesn't. But you don't know that until you-
Okay, so my apologies to the board. I didn't, I thought we were voting twice on two different complaints. We're actually voting three times. Once on each issue in the first complaint and once on the second complaint. So-
I'm sorry, what?
I know, so I'm going to explain.
Okay, sorry.
So I'm explaining. So in the first complaint, there are two issues. The first issue is whether, is around the comprehensive school counseling plan. And the second issue is around the education plan and profile. So we're going to go back and do this vote again. I apologize for getting that wrong. So we are now voting on issue number one about whether the complaint is unsubstantiated and that Tubman has developed, submitted, and begun implementation of a comprehensive school counseling plan. It's separate from the education plan and profile. It's about the counseling plan. All those in favor of affirming the superintendent's decision around the counseling plan, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I think I'll just, oh, I didn't really get to go into that one.
Hey, and all those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
There's a no, and then abstention is Herman.
I'm going to ask clarification. Did we swap things? Did we start with the-
No, the first one is the counseling.
We had to go back and do it over.
So issue number one is affirmed by a vote of five to one with one abstention.
Correct.
And now, the second issue is around the education plan and profile. So all those in favor of affirming the superintendent's Step 1 decision around the education plan and profile, please indicate saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
And Gary wasn't.
Which is different than-
Gary wasn't no. I just want to make sure that we have it on the record.
Oh, he said.
Okay, he raised his hand, so I'm going to take that as a no.
It has to be a verbal vote.
I'm sorry, I pressed the wrong button. So that'd be a no.
Okay, and then any abstentions? All right, so issue number two is affirmed by a vote of five to two with no abstentions. Finally, we're going to move on to complaint number 2023-03, in which Mr. Cruz raises concerns about the district's formal complaint process and the district's statement.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I wasn't aware that I was, we were doing this complaint. So I'm going to, we're going to have to reschedule this one. This is a different type of complaint.
Mr. Cruz, we communicated the email that this-
Yeah, I wasn't.
You accepted. I just want to be clear.
No, 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 no. I didn't get a confirmation. I didn't get a confirmation. And then too, I just want to get some clarity, too, on the record as well. So, so you guys basically voted. So therefore, my complaint was that I do not have an educational plan and that many students like Jamal do not have an educational plan in middle school. So you guys are confirming that the district has an educational plan, even though I have requested an educational plan and I don't have one. I just want to get some clarification.
No, that's actually not. What we affirmed tonight was that the district was in compliance with Division 22 guidelines around educational plan and profile and comprehensive school counseling plan.
I don't understand. If I'm saying that if I did not get the educational plan, that's not in compliance, and how is that in compliance? I'm really confused.
So again, going back to what staff presented about the district being in compliance, which I know falls short of where you think the district should be on this issue. But again, the complaint process is not about making policy around what it should look like. The complaint process is about simply that compliance question.
I'm not asking for a policy change. I'm asking for a direction because you guys have the power to direct.
So our decision tonight, which has already been made, is that the district, we are upholding the superintendent's findings that the district is in compliance. I think on this next complaint, I guess, I kind of wanted-
I will confirm at 5:25 on February 17, Mr. Cruz did accept that we can do both hearings. So just for the record.
Mr. Cruz, do you have a response on that in terms of receiving that email and confirming? The reason I ask is because I know scheduling these is challenging both for you.
I don't have time to go back and forth and look at an email and get my confirmation. We're just going to say, we're going to reschedule this complaint, period. I don't have time right now.
Well, Mr. Cruz, I think the issue is because you confirmed, the board can choose to-
Well, I did not confirm. So then that'd be a legal issue. So if you want to go back and forth with that, like, it's already a legal issue in terms of your interpretation that you guys all voted for the educational plan